It's not, it's not five yet.
Yeah.
We have thirty seconds. Okay, we'll ask the Jennifers. Well, it is finally five o'clock and it's time to call the meeting to order. So I'm, this is the Planning Commission and there are agendas in the back, I believe, if you don't have one. And welcome. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes from our... Oh, do we need to call rule? I'd accept a motion to...
I, I move we approve the minutes for the June fourteen, twenty twenty-two regular meeting.
Support.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Unanimous voice vote. Communications from the audience. This is strictly for items not on the public hearing agenda. And since I see no one running to the mic, we will move on to new business. The first item on tonight's agenda is the one hundred and forty-seventh Street Avenue request to rezone the parcel from low-density residential to industrial. So... Is there someone here to make that presentation? Just state your name and...
My name is Cal Prince, three eighteen West Thirty-Fifth Street in Holland. Requesting a, a change to industrial property. We're in the assumption that this is approved and we'll be back with a full site plan. We didn't want to start the site plan review or site plans until we were able to get the, or know that we for sure had industrial zoning in the site. So we'll be back with a, with a project for this. It'll probably be six to eight months by the time we get it put together, assuming this is approved as industrial land. We'll be using the entire site. We'll be placing three to four buildings on this site. One for processing, there'll be a lavatory, as well as a storage, indoor storage area, and then a processing plant. So our request is that today that be zoned industrial so that we can move forward.
Okay. Steve, do you have any comments to make on that? Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, just a little bit of background. I've got a few maps on the screen for you. So the property that is being requested to be rezoned, fifty-three, thirty-two, one hundred and forty-seventh Street, you can see it in that first map there under Fillmore Township zoning, sort of outlined in the purple. That is the large piece of property that we are talking about tonight. That's the piece that has recently come into the city through some annexation. I would note that the rest of the property, the little cutout parcels that are not included in the rezoning, were also just recently annexed into the city. And really how that works, since the property in the township was zoned residential, it comes into the city as low-density residential. And so obviously to develop the property for an industrial use, they need the rezoning. That next map in the middle of the screen there, Holland zoning, that's showing you our zoning. So you can see all around the property, with the exception of the rest of the property on the east that's still in the township, is all zoned industrial currently. And then finally, that last map is sort of the result. If you were to approve this, that property would turn gray into the industrial zone. And then the rest of those, those three other properties along one hundred and forty-seventh Street would stay in the yellow, which is our low-density residential zoning category. So kind of you have the staff report, you know, our, our assessment of this was that this is consistent with the master plan, that this is certainly able to be developed to meet the Udo requirements. You guys may not see the site plan, depending on what they choose to do. It's completely possible that it's done administratively. So we'll wait to see those details later. But the request in front of you guys tonight is just a straight rezoning from going to the LDR to the industrial zone. We recommend approval.
Okay. Commissioners have any questions for the property owner?
No, I, I do for staff, but not for the property owner.
Okay, sure.
Yeah. Steve, I just want to make, make sure I'm clear. When I look at the, the first of those three diagrams, the one that shows Fillmore Township zoning, all of the yellow that's in there even to the east, that's all LDR in Fillmore Township, correct? So it's a big area of, of LDR in Fillmore.
Yeah, it's what they call our one residential, but right, the rest of that stuff is Fillmore Township, that's right.
Okay, and so they had, they had a finger of residential into, into our industrial zone district. And now we're, we're kind of filling that in with an industrial, that's the, that's the request here. And I know we're, one of the things that we try to prevent doing ourselves actively is create spot zoning, where there's one, one use that's kind of cut off from every other surrounding use. And this is the first time I've, I've even considered the idea of passively creating spot zoning. That it's, it, I'm uncomfortable with those three residential in that sea of industrial that's, that's out there. Is there anything out there on that kind of, it's, I don't know if that's the correct terminology or not, but passively creating that spot zoning by rezoning everything around something and leaving something as, as an island like this?
Yeah, it's, it's probably more of a policy decision. There's not anything that would prohibit or, you know, say that that's not, you know, meeting one of our standards. I will tell you that we did reach out to those folks and asked them if they wanted to be a part of this. We had a couple of conversations with them and they did not want to be included in the rezoning. So along those same lines, I guess we were, you know, hoping that maybe we could prevent that too. But kind of listening to what they had to say and the fact that they are in the residential zone district now, the thought was, since they didn't want to participate, to just leave them alone for now.
Not rezone them without their request to do so. And they'll, they should have an opportunity at a public hearing coming up very quickly to speak to us too, if they want to speak to us directly about this.
That's right. And, and I would note that the properties themselves are over an acre. If you guys recall, the industrial outlot development that we allow for allows for lots to be between ten thousand square feet and an acre. So it does seem like there could be an opportunity in the future to, to do something if, you know, they weren't included as part of this project.
Okay, great, thanks Steve.
Okay, any other questions otherwise? Thank you. And as you can see from the asterix on the agenda, we will be having a public hearing. So I call the public hearing to order. And this is concerning rezoning of fifty-three, thirty-two, one hundred and forty-seventh. Let's see. Any persons in the audience who wishes to speak to this issue, come forward and identify yourself. And you will have five minutes is the limit.
Hi, Jim Seabright. I live at fifty-three, twenty, one hundred and forty-seventh. And as Steve mentioned, they did reach out to us and we would like to stay residential because we have no intention on leaving. We like where we're at. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, well then I will officially close the public hearing. Okay, any questions or comments? Or if not, I will accept the motion to move on.
I move we recommend the rezoning from low-density residential to industrial.
Support.
Okay, all in favor, say yes.
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 Okay, unanimous voice vote. Moving on to item...
Would you, would you do that, could you, you know, be clear about a yes and a no? Because that just kind of went right by and I, I used to have voice votes.
Oh, oh, individual, okay.
I don't know if we do that here, but just make sure you do, uh, does anybody, is anybody opposed?
Oh, they opposed, okay.
I feel like we just...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I just assumed...
Jonas?
I'm not, I'm, I know how that's spelled. Okay, item B is, now Steve, why don't you help me along here? Are we gonna do all three of these together? We gonna do them individually? What, what works best?
Yeah, I, I guess I'll, I'll leave that, you know... Maybe I'll leave that to your discretion, how you want to do it, but there is a couple of different actions. I mean, if you want to, you know, just kind of go through the whole, you know, presentation and then, I, I guess my thought was you could just take up those separate items and, and do votes on, on those individual items.
Okay, that's the way I'll break it up then. And do you want to make a presentation of what's coming? Or do you, do, should I invite the Dwelling Place to come forward and do that? Okay.
Do you want to hear from them first?
Sure.
Okay.
Good evening, Commissioners. Stephen Wooden here on behalf of Dwelling Place. Our business address is one oh one Sheldon Boulevard, Suite Two in Grand Rapids, Michigan. For, as we've come before you before, what's before you is a scattered site or two-site affordable housing development consisting of forty-six apartments in total. Thirty-one on the northern site, which we dubbed the First United Methodist Site due to its current prop, it being the current property owner. And then fifteen apartments in a two-story structure in the southern site, which we cleverly deem the Hope Site. In addition to our intent to, to obtain long-term housing tax credits to finance the development, that would mean that all apartments would be affordable and priced affordably for those making at or below eighty percent of the area median income. And the average income in rent would be priced at sixty percent of the area median income. We're also hoping to procure eight eleven vouchers for eleven of the apartments to provide income-based rental assistance for eleven households that are, that include an adult living with a disability who qualifies for what are called Medicaid waiver community services. So it enables them to live a more independent life than what would be offered at something like an AFC home. In front of you, in terms of the, the two main questions, the, the rezoning and the site plan, I was gonna speak predominantly on the rezoning and then defer to our architect on the site plan. But the, the, the large question, or the two questions that come, that really boil, or the rezoning request really boils down to two questions. First, should first-floor commercial be a requirement at this site? We do not believe so. It was first an impetus because of the desire to have the two buildings close to each other to create more of a, of a logical connection between them, more of a campus feel, so to speak. But then, as we discussed with staff and discussed preliminarily with you all in previous study sessions and included, and as well as discussed in our community engagement sessions, we did not necessarily think that a first-floor commercial requirement was appropriate for the block, for the northern block in that rezoning the area westward from central downtown to Centennial would also help create a more, create a transition between the downtown shopping district to the residential neighborhood by A, removing that first-floor requirement and B, having design or exterior designs that have to complement the adjacent historic neighborhood. And, you know, in the end, the considerations around, you know, rezoning request, as you know, would not reduce the parking, minimum parking requirements. It doesn't increase or decrease or affect the building height limitations. It really just changes those two key issues. In terms of the site plan itself, staff has recommended approval of the site plan with the provided conditions. I'm going to have Kim Distrieter, our project architect, to speak to the site plan in particular, highlighting the considerations for transparency on the building, as well as privacy screening and setbacks as well, and other details pertinent to the site plan. So Kim, why don't you come on up?
Do you need me by the microphone for recording? So I can't go over there?
Yeah, yes, yep.
Okay. I'll just...
You could tell me where...
I'll just sort of point, okay. I guess I'll start out with kind of the process that we used. We went to the community. We had, I think, what was it, two or three engagement meetings?
Four.
Four, okay, four. We asked a lot of questions of the community and we responded the best that we could. We gave them two different exterior designs. One was a little more horizontal and contemporary. And I would say over ninety percent, ninety-five percent of the people in the room said, no, we want something more historic. So when we look at the design, we'll see something with a cornice. It has a expression line on it, typical to historic buildings. And then the brick parts on the building are a reference to kind of Holland architecture in general. There's a hint to the, the Dutch step gable, but not literal. We used brick, we pulled brick from both of the churches and incorporated it into the base of the building so that they felt like visually it's part of us. And that was intentional. The location of the buildings are both on Tenth Street. The churches were quite insistent that they wanted a relationship there between the two buildings, which pulls it off from Ninth Street. So on Ninth Street currently, there is a zero setback to the First United Methodist Church parking lot. And what we're doing is meeting the current code and putting in a ten-foot setback to the majority of that parking lot, except for just at the entrances. So there's a lot more screening there than there was before. On the northwest corner, we have a ten-foot setback, plus a fence that's set ten feet back from the property line. There is another entrance to the building directly across from First United Methodist Church, again, increasing that relationship. Then on the Hope property, we put all the parking in the back and we tried the best we could to meet the intent of the Form-Based Code. The dumpster for the church is currently on the side of the, of their west building. And we incorporated that dumpster into the dumpster of the new building, which has fifteen units in it. So all the parking is in the back. The screening on the First United Methodist Church, once we go through this, we have pictures of intended fences. There's two shown. The staff has recommended that we not put the vertical pieces on, on the top and just have a solid fence, six feet high. On the First United Methodist property, that same fence is along the property line with the houses. In addition to that, there's a num, there's a fair amount of landscape screening. We have a landscape plan that shows where that would be. The parking lot is a little different than the first one we did. We put the parking lot so that pedestrians can go either way to either the church or the apartment building. It used to go vertical. You see the fire truck on there. We have fire truck access, we checked that out. We need to get into the north parking lot to get to the back of the building for a hundred and fifty feet. On some of the previous drawings, we had an art wall on the north wall. So the intent there was, we understand, and we're on Ninth Street. So we provided, instead of, we went to, I gotta go back a little bit. We went to the DDA and they were concerned that an art wall might be good and it might be bad. So we took out the art wall and we put a, a, a building facade on there with brick all the way up and it, it adds another front to the building. Again, we're trying to meet the intent of the code. The, the front of the buildings, on the Hope building, we're at thirty-one percent fenestration, the requirement is thirty. On the First United Methodist building, we're at, this is the front of the building now. We're at twenty-eight percent, the requirement is thirty. So we're asking a little bit of leeway on that because we have dormers that are incorporated into that and the dormer takes out space for windows, but it adds expression to the building. When you get around the sides of the buildings, they're not front windows. They're like mechanical room on one side and bathroom. And the things you deal with is trying to get your energy requirement met, putting in enough glass. So it's difficult to meet those requirements in some of those areas that aren't like the front windows. There is a corner requirement. The problem with the cor, corner requirement, as I was going through the architecture, we don't have that. Maybe we can go to that one. This is the Hope property. Is either the, uh, one back or one forward, I'm not sure. Yeah, it must be one forward.
No?
Doesn't go forward any?
So the... The west elevation?
West elevation, the lower.
Look at the lower...
We're really looking at the, the front elevation, which is a separate drawing. But I can show you on this one. You can see that the building is, is, is fairly long, has two stories. We kept this height down for the neighborhood that's mostly two stories. When you put an entrance on the corner, the building looks really long. And it almost doesn't meet the intent of the code in the sense that we want to provide a front door. So we put the entrance a little bit off from that corner to break it up, about a third of the way down. And then on Pine Street, which is a little bit more residential, we put a front porch. So that seemed like a more residential expression for Pine Street. And that one, you can see it's the one on the bottom right. So I don't know, did I address screening adequately for you?
Certainly, I mean, I'm sure the planning commission might also...
Yeah, and the set, the setbacks are, the setbacks are all within the Form-Based Code requirement. And on the, on the west side of the three-story building, we have more than what's required next to the residential pieces.
Okay.
Do you have any questions? I probably have more to say if, if, based on his comments, but...
Sure, I guess, I would say, Steve, do you want to say something before the Commissioners ask questions? Or do you want to let the Commissioners ask questions and then...
Sure, no, that'd be fine. I'll just kind of go through, get some more background and then you guys can deliberate.
Yep.
Okay.
So...
I'm gonna see if we can pull that one up while you...
Okay, thanks.
Okay, just a few things here.
Yep.
So this is just a picture of a large kind of snap of the zoning map for the area. So you can hopefully see those two highlighted in yellow, those two properties. So the one on the south in the green area is the Hope property. And then the one on the north is, and some of that salmon color is the First United Methodist Church property. What's highlighted here is the area to be developed. What's important about those colors is that green is the Form-Based Code Centennial District and that pink color is the Central Downtown. So tho, those are the two zoning districts we're working with. And those are the two areas that they are proposing to develop. This is just sort of a zoom in of that same area. And here I'm trying to highlight the area that is proposed to be rezoned. So you can see the area to be rezoned is a little bit bigger than the area that was to be developed. That's because you really, on your agenda tonight, you have two rezoning actions. The, the, one of them is for the actual apartment building in that Central Downtown, change that to Centennial into the green. And then what's left over, a little bit like we were talking about with the other rezoning, what's left over would be those properties, that front pine. And so the idea is that those would also be included in the rezoning. So that's why this rezoning area looks a little bit bigger than that area to be developed. So kind of two rezoning actions there. You've hit on this a little bit already, but this is the building types that are permitted in each of the Form-Based Code areas. So you can see in those columns, you can see that first column, the Central Downtown, permits the mixed-use buildings, permits the commercial buildings, but doesn't permit the multifamily buildings. You move over into about the middle of that chart and you can see the Centennial, the C E N T district allows for the mixed-use, the commercial, and the multifamily over five units. So that's really the reason for the rezoning request is because the Centennial District allows for that multifamily. It also does allow for the mixed-use and the commercial. But as they indicated, they didn't have a desire to do any of that. So to rezone it to the Centennial allows for that. Doesn't mean that if those other properties were rezoned to Centennial, that somebody still could do a commercial building or a mixed-use building on what's left over. And then some of the nuance of sort of the difference in terms of setback, really, the only other difference is some setback requirements. In the Central Downtown, we do allow for the zero lot line development. And in the Centennial, it's really a five-foot requirement. So the building envelope does get a little bit smaller with the Centennial zoning district than it would with the Central Downtown. So I guess that's what I'm describing is what I think the two major differences are. In the Centennial, you get to do the multifamily over five units. But then the setback is a little bit, is a little bit greater in the Centennial District. So again, just kind of working through some of the site plan that you have already hit on, again, wanting to point out that in that form, in the First United Methodist property, the one on the, on the north side of Tenth Street here, you can see that those properties on Pine Street that aren't included in the development that have been noticed for the rezoning. This is just a blow-up of that. Elevation drawings that you've seen already, three stories at the First United Methodist property. You've heard about some of the details with the fencing. The dumpster enclosures are shown there. And then this is the Hope Church property, just a blow-up of that. And their elevation drawings, that's a two-story building. And you can see in that lower right-hand corner, the porch.
You don't have rock elevations there.
I don't.
No.
It's on my...
We can throw your jive in there.
Well, I'm gonna keep rolling and ask Commissioners if they have any questions. Either the presenters or Steve. He did. Make sure, yeah, I'm doing construction also.
Yeah, one, one of the, one of the things that we're curious about is dumpster locations during construction, where they're gonna be. And I, I don't know if you've got the ability to be able to... And I, um, I don't know if you've got the ability to be able to, kind of give us an idea of what you're planning on doing there because the, the churches are gonna continue to be active sites throughout the construction process. And I know there's some incorporation, at least on one of the sides.
Yeah, the, the legal aspect of this, it's called means and methods. Architects give the means and methods to the contractor. But we can stipulate that they have to provide dumpster location on the site. I imagine they'll probably just pull it forward in the driveway, but I don't know the exact-
Build the construction fence around the backside of the dumpsters.
Yeah.
Have you had pretty significant interest in these properties for, uh, potential tenants?
So, um, we have had a number of, of families with persons with disabilities, uh, already approach, uh, us. Um, you know, just to give everyone a, a, a clear timeline. If, uh, the city, uh, approve the rezoning, the site plan, and, uh, will be going to council for a pilot request. That's actually, maybe in the words of Churchill, not the end nor the beginning of the end, but the end of the beginning. Um, because we will then be pursuing, uh, funding through MISTHA. And, uh, that is a competitive application process. We'll be hoping to submit our application on October one. We'll be finding out the status of that funding late December, early January. Uh, like I said, those, uh, like I said, those, those fam- like I said, those, those families have, said those, those families have approached, those families have approached us. Families have approached us, have approached us, uh, we approached us, uh, we've been, uh, we've been clear, uh, we've been clear about the ti- we've been clear about the timeline. Clear about the timeline, but we're about the timeline, but we've also timeline, but we've also line, but we've also, but we've also shared also, shared more details about how the eight-eleven application process works because it is different than, uh, a standard rental application. It involves going through, um, the local, um, it involves either going through one of the Medicaid waiver agencies in the area or Ottawa County CMH.
Yeah, I'd be interested to know, I know we had it, we went round and round about parking the last time, and it seems like you've met the, uh, the ordinances. I was, I'm just wondering how you arrived at that.
We actually alre- we always did meet the parking requirements. Uh, I think there was a concern in the initial site plan of how much asphalt was on the site, and particularly the asphalt along Ninth Street. And so, there was a hope of being able to have space designated for parking, but maybe not have it paved so we can create a different kind of feature along Ninth Street. But that appeared, i- it appeared in everyone's best interest just to ensure we had enough parking to meet the, uh, the minimum requirements, uh, which we've had from the start.
Holland does not allow banking of parking. That's what we were talking about, though. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I've got, I've got a couple. Um, first, just for full disclosure, and I mentioned this to, um, the applicant. I, I actually worked for Dwelling Place for a very short period of time between college and law school, but not anything that would create any kind of conflict of interest here. But just in case anybody goes back and looks at my resume, they'll see that for a few weeks in nineteen eighty-nine, I worked down on South Division and Wealthy.
I believe you kept it on your resume.
Yeah, it's, it's somewhere buried in some version of it somewhere.
Respectfully, Mr. Mayor, I believe the statute of limitations ends when I wasn't alive.
Yeah. Thank you for making me feel very old before the vote.
Yeah, not the, not the best move, but-
Yes.
He does that to me all the time.
Yeah, I, uh, one of the things that I, that I think I remember from, from reading through the details on this, one permanent par- bicycle parking per unit, and then four additional for visitors. Am I remembering those numbers?
That is your code, and we're going to meet the code.
You're gonna meet the code, okay. And some of these are two-bedroom units.
Yes.
It might, it might, I noticed that as well.
The code says one by interior bike, which-
I-
We will, yeah, it'll be more than adequate.
Yeah, okay, good, because I understand it, I, I do understand that meets the code. I also know that one of the things and one of the attractive things about, um, this development is it's for a lot of folks who may not be drivers. I mean, that's one of the things, as we talked about parking in the study session previously, that a lot of these folks don't drive, don't have cars, which immediately makes the mayor think, well, there's probably going to be more bicycle riders than there, uh, than there may be in a typical, uh, development that's designed more for people who may have, may have cars. And so, my encouragement would be, uh, maybe looking at, I, I don't think it's something that would keep me from voting on the, voting approvingly on the site plan, but something to consider for these folks to make sure that for those that are riding bicycles, that there is enough bicycle parking available for them as a, as a sheltered, permanent parking for them.
And, yeah, your code requires sheltered, permanent parking for one, one, uh, bicycle per unit.
Right, and I was, when I was looking at two-bedroom, two-bedroom units, I was thinking, okay, if there are two folks living there who both have bicycles, um, and I, and I agree that, you know, there may not be bicycles in every single unit. It may not be a need for, you know, forty-six covered part, you know, permanent parking spaces for bicycles. But that if we're looking at meeting the needs of the potential residents for a development like this, that that may be something to look at, to increase that number, to make sure that folks who, who may not have a vehicle, who may be looking at a bicycle as a primary means of transportation, have sheltered, permanent parking for those bicycles.
You know, always our, our, our first goal is to meet the code, and then our next co- uh, our next step is to push past it and see if that's possible. And certainly, as we get into the, you know, should we get funded and we go into the, uh, more detailed design plan, we'll see if there's available space to maximize the sheltered parking. If not, it may be worth considering what other ways of bicycle storage can we also provide beyond what the code allows or beyond what the code requires.
Great, thank you. That's, that's all I have for applicant stuff.
Okay, any other commissioners with questions?
May- maybe asking or following up on that a little bit. Just looking through the plans, it does note, like, it, it states or bike storage or for thirty-one. I would like to get some clarity on that.
I've already updated that.
Okay.
On my plan.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure, because I don't want to have it where it's swapped out for an office or something like that where it ends up going away, so.
We, we are not currently asking for a waiver on that. So, we will have to comply.
Sure, okay.
Okay, sounds like, sounds like we're rolling. Now, thank you. And I need to open a public hearing, so I'm debating whether I do it one item at a time or can we? I'm gonna open the public hearing for the three listed items.
I think, I think that's okay because they're all related. And as long as everybody in the, in the public knows that they have the ability during this one public hearing to speak on any of those three applications.
The three applications that we'll be taking individually when I close the public hearing. So, the public hearing is open. What I need you to do, if you wish to speak, is to come to the mic and give me your name and address. And you're limited to five minutes.
Hi, my name is Sean Robbins. I live at forty-eight and a half, West Eighteenth Street, Holland, Michigan. As a person with disability, I have a question about, um, I don't know how like zoning goes or permits go. I catch max reserve. And a lot of times, properties don't allow max to come to the entrance. And as a person who has challenging walking distances, I just want to assure that in the planning that the max reserve can come onto the property to an entrance where we can leave the property or people who are living there, which I attend, I want to apply, but can get on and not have far to travel.
We can-
It's the public transportation.
We can note that your max is our bus system.
But it's the reserve that is like specifically for people with disabilities, not the city buses or whatever.
Sure.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mike King. I live at nine-nine West Tenth Street. Been there thirty-five years. Now, I gotta look at a big building next to my house. No consideration from these guys. Do you think that's right? To put a building, three-story, in all their backyards? I don't.
Actually, they have requirements they need to meet, and the plans that we've just reviewed do that.
We don't want our properties rezoned at all on the corner of Tenth and Pine. And to thirty-one Pine.
So noted.
Okay.
Okay, so noted, thank you.
So, they have all this parking lot. Can they not move the building o- across Ninth Street? And give a little consideration? I mean, now, I've got windows, people, balconies. If it was your yard, or your yard, or your yard, you wouldn't like that either. Now, I'm just about, I'm ready to sell my property, because I don't want to live next to a block wall. And no one else would. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. So noted. Okay, anyone else? Have things to say?
My name is Jan Durcksey. I live at fifty West Eighth Street, number four zero four. And I've lived there for four years. I own my own condominium there. It's a wonderful place to live, and I will be overlooking this property, and I have no problem with that. I'm really pleased to have the city have more affordable housing. And I believe that the city now has enough commercial property. Uh, I keep hearing of, a lot of places are open for lease right now downtown and just move more of the commercial north. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Rosalie Austin. I live at four-five-seven West Twenty-first Street, and I'm a parent of a daughter with significant disabilities. I applaud this project coming to Holland. It's about time. There is a severe shortage of accessible, affordable housing for persons with disabilities. And I'm grateful, I hope it comes to fruition.
Thank you.
Tyrade Young, nine-sixty East Tenth Street in Holland. I've, uh, lived with a disability my entire life. I've worked with people with disabilities. I advocate on behalf of people with disabilities. And I know from many years in this, uh, in this work, in this vocation, that the three primary barriers that people with disabilities face in independence is access to transportation, employment, and affordable housing. And I believe that this development addresses many of those barriers. And I hope that you'll give this, uh, favorable consideration. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm Karen Prinz. I live at nineteen Old Mill Drive, Unit thirteen, in the city of Holland. And I have a niece who, uh, needs looking after. She's the daughter of my twin sister, and my twin sister and I are the old people here. Like others. When we leave this planet, we want this young lady to be well-cared-for. And she'll be next to the church we already attend. The other positive thing for her is that she's already acclimated to what I consider to be Holland's, uh, shining light, the max bus system. She uses it to work in Zeeland. She does well. So, uh, this downtown project would enable the mother, my twin, and myself to rest easy when the time comes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? See, seeing no one else coming to the mic, oh, oh, okay. Keep the hearing open.
Virginia Beard. I'm a political science professor at Hope College and a member of the Ottawa County Housing Commission, formerly at three-sixty Pine Avenue. And I have come to city council for a number of years over different affordable housing projects and done research on what Holland is doing. I also am writing a book on the history of zoning and ideas that drive policy. And so, while this is particular to Holland, it's also part of a bigger national discussion. And Holland has the opportunity to lead the way on allowing these kind of changes to happen. I listened to all the debates online and in person about the Reliable Sports Building, about the project that was proposed on Seventh Street for affordable housing, and heard things like parking, and where do trash trucks turn around, and where do dumpsters go about those? Well, they managed to figure it out for a non-affordable housing to go in the exact same spot. And what it says is that we're sticking to a cliche thing nationwide where we're okay with rich people in density housing, but not poor people or people with different abilities. And housing is what it means to be human. Having a place to call home is part of what it means to have dignity. It allows you to participate in the community. So, without housing that our workforce can afford and people with different abilities can afford, we are harming them. But we're also harming ourselves. It hurts the whole community when different kinds of people can't flourish and contribute to that community. It hurts the ability of the economy to grow because employers can't recruit and retain talent at all different levels. This project is First United Methodist and Hope Church putting their money where their mouth is about what their faith says about the body of Christ and including all people. We can figure out all these logistics about dumpsters and bikes and asphalt and whatever else. Don't let that be something that the consideration doesn't allow the zoning changes that need to happen. Zoning is not written in stone from the beginning of history. It was started at the turn of the century and started to flourish in order to do things like replace racial covenants. The root of zoning, if you read some of the leading scholars on it, was to keep black people away from white people and poor people away from rich people. We can use it to make sure our communities are good and that pollution and density don't hurt us, but we need to stop using it the way that it was intended for the last hundred years. So, I really would like to see the city approve this and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Otherwise, I will call the public hearing closed. And we will adjust, address B, C, and D individually, starting out with B. And I believe that's the, oh, what, the Central Downtown District Zone Parcel, so that's the Methodist Parcel. And? Any questions, comments? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chair, if I, if I may, I'd like to make some comments about the, the project in general before we get to-
Sure.
Um, just because I think, I think it's deserving of that. Um, I want, I want to applaud, um, Hope Church and First United Methodist Church in being deliberate about, about doing this and trying to see this through. I know that this has been a, a multi-year, uh, project for them, a multi-year mission for them to be able to try to get this to this point um, where it does fit into, uh, Holland's, I think, very forward-thinking zoning code. Um, you know, we're talking about zone districts here that were created and crafted as part of our Udo process, our rewriting of our zoning ordinance, um, designed to try to bring housing of this type closer to the downtown area, um, yet still do its best to match the flavor of the neighborhood. And I think this project does that on a whole, I think. And, and I frankly, I have, from the very beginning, the first time I've heard, I heard about this project, loved the idea of it being specifically designed for people with disabilities, for people who may not have as many automobiles. And while we talk about, about parking and about bicycles, uh, the talk about parking was, how do we figure out a way to make this work when there's a field of asphalt that's already sitting there? And how can that, though, how can we find a way to be able to have churches that use parking primarily on Sundays, share parking with residences that primarily use parking, uh, other days of the week because they're not driving themselves and they're not necessarily parking them there themselves, but they have support people who are coming in and service people who are coming in during the week time when the church may not be using that parking. And I think that, uh, they came up with some creative ways to be- to be able to, to do that here. And the idea of providing enough bicycle parking for folks as well is designed to meet the needs of the people who may be using this particular project with them specifically in mind. This is a location that is going to be walkable for a lot of the folks that may be using this. But there are a lot of folks that have bicycles as well and have other forms of transportation, or maybe having people who come and visit them in those ways. And we want to make sure that the, the planning that we're doing meets the code that we've put in place, but is also meeting the needs of the people, not only who are going to be using this particular site, but those in the surrounding neighborhoods. The, the zoning change that's being requested, I think people need to remember that in either one of those zone districts, there could be multi-unit housing that, that comes into that space. That the rezoning that's being done here is not to allow for a building of this size or this stature to be built where it wouldn't be able to be built before, but, but merely changing a use on a first floor that allows for some, some additional residences, but probably even a lower impact to the neighbors than commercial space might be on that, on that first floor, which would be allowed without the rezoning. So with those things being said, I'm, I'm ready to move forward with, with approval on these. And unless other commissioners have comments to make, I'm ready to make some motions here.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Nathan. Mr. Mayor. I appreciate all of those thoughts, and I had many of the same ones. I did want to just, just express my support for the, for the, for the rezoning request. Back when we started Udo many years ago, it seems, we, we first started looking at a transect diagram that kind of talked about the transition from commercial to low-density residential. And I often go back to that when we're looking at these kinds of things. And I think that this, this, this rezoning really, I think, fits into that transect, that transition. It really makes sense as we tran, transition from, from the centennial, from the commercial district to the centennial. I think it makes more sense. This project seems to fit into the neighborhood. So I, so I'm, will happily vote for the rezoning. And, and as far as the site plan goes, I really appreciate all of the work that Dwelling Place and Hope Church and the First United Methodist Church has done in interacting with the community and talking about what this means for the community, making changes based on what the community has, has provided, the input the community has provided. So I feel like this, this project really reflects what the community wants. Not everybody, and we all recognize that, that, that these, that these projects are not always acceptable to everyone in the community. But I think that the developer's done a stellar job in making sure that input has been, has been, is reflected in the final product, so. That's what I would like to say.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else have... Questions or comments? Otherwise, I'm, I'm waiting for a motion.
Under item 4B, I move, we recommend the rezoning of 94 and 98 West 9th Street, 57 Part, 85, 91, 95 West 10th Street. These properties from the Form-Based Code Central Downtown, the FCDT, to Form-Based Code Centennial, FCENT.
Do I have a second?
Support.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Carries unanimously.
I would also make a motion that 94 and 98 West 9th Street, 57 Part, 85, 91, 95, and 100 West 10th Street, and 77 West 11th Street Part, that we approve the, the site plan contingent upon the requirements of, of city staff and any conditions that have been put in place by city staff.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign.
And then last but not least, I would, I move that we recommend the rezoning of 100 West 9th Street, 227 and 231 Pine Avenue, and 99 West 10th Street to be rezoned from Form-Based Code Central Downtown, the FCDT district, to Form-Based Code Centennial, FCENT.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Unanimous voice vote. Well, thank you all for coming, and, and yes. Okay, moving on, one more item on the agenda.
I think it's presumptuous of you, Mr. Chair, to think that they were not here to hear about the changes to the Uniform Development Ordinance.
You mean the text amendment changes?
Yeah, I think that that's why they're here.
Yeah. Anyway, so let's, let's, let's get into, and...
This is the thrilling part of the meeting.
This is the good part.
Yeah, this is the good part, I know.
This is the good stuff. A real bit of the meeting.
Okay. Steve, text amendment changes, Chapter 39. You mean your favorite color, asterisk? So we lost our... Okay, so what are the technical issues? Tricia can fix it.
So we are gonna talk about public lodging, care facilities, and shelters. So we last left off, you asked us to do a little bit more homework. So that's what we've come back with. So hopefully, hopefully I can explain this to make a little bit of sense. So what you see here, the use chart, for nursing homes, we've just changed that to the care facilities. And since our discussion, really what we've done is removed shelters from the category with care facilities. So on the bottom of this page, you see shelters has its own, has its own line. So I guess the way that I describe these changes is we've taken public lodging. Public lodging used to include shelters. We've taken public lodging. So public lodging is really just going to address hotel-type use. Taken shelters out of that. Shelters has its own category. So we'll address that separately. And then care facilities for those other things, nursing homes, home for the age, those sorts of things. So I guess that in a nutshell is what these changes are attempting to do. And I guess I, I do want to thank Lynn. We met a few times, and she was very helpful coming up with, you know, the definition and how we were gonna address shelters. So I, I want to thank you for that. So this is the introduction of that definition. I guess I don't want to read it for you, but we've created that definition to be separate. We think it is very broad intentionally to try to capture a lot of different types of uses that may be associated with the shelter use. The care facility, again, this is the same definition that you saw before, minus, you know, we've taken out that one of the examples is shelter. So it's the same thing that you've seen before. Taking out the definition of nursing homes since that's being captured in care facility. And then again, remember, we had that small change with adult foster care facility, just to recognize that these types of uses typically get a state permit. And then in all of our tables, these are really just the result of making those changes to introduce these changes to each individual zoning district. So again, in the HDR, one of the nuances, we were including that care facility in there. But we had two categories, two thresholds. Up to 20 units, it was a permitted use. And then over 20, it was a special use. So the permitted use was a P*. So there are some restrictions or standards that come along with that. So it's being put into that P* category. And then, as I say, each individual district, this is just putting those in there. So this is the CMU adding care facility, CMU adding the shelter. Let me just back up for a minute. And with shelter, the way that we, one of the changes from our last conversation, one of the differences that we have come up with is, before it was included in public lodging. And so what we did was we just mimicked public lodging in terms of the zoning district that it's permitted in and the process. So the public lodging and the shelter, when you look at that, when you look at this chart, are, are the same. So they're all P*. So the feeling was, is that's the way we treated shelters before. That's just the way we're gonna treat shelters now. So they're permitted in the same zoning districts with the same process. That's a little different than we talked about before when we, when we lumped them in with care facilities. So I actually think this is a little bit better product by mimicking what we had in there previously. So sorry to back up there. So then, the rest of these zoning districts are just the result of adding those. CMU at the care facility, the shelters, RMU, same thing. GMU, PUD District, add the care facility, add the shelters. Form-Based District, Care Facility and Shelter. Then in the ED and in the I, we're only adding in the shelter because that district only had public lodging in it before. Didn't have the nursing home in there. So it's only adding in for the shelter. And again, using that same approval process. So it's gonna follow that same process that it had before. So by adding care facilities in the HDR District and shelters as a P*, then we just simply insert it here in 4.02 as one of the uses permitted. And then at the end of 4.02 is where we'll add the language of those standards for both care facilities and shelters. That's what you have here. You've seen this before with care facilities. So that's, that's the same. And then for shelter, it is really just inserting that language in there that describes, really what I've already described in terms of the process, is gonna be the same as we had before with public lodging. Because we have the care facilities being introduced as the special use for over 20 in the HDR District, then it gets inserted as one of the uses that's in the special use section. So that is our round five of Udo changes. I hope that addresses the comments that we talked about last time. Tried to keep it as simple as we could in terms of not moving a lot of stuff around, keeping it the same as we had before. So hopefully that makes sense. And we're asking for the, for it to go to City Council for approval.
Any questions from commissioners? Thank you, Steve. I believe this one requires a public hearing.
It does.
So I am opening a public hearing. If there are any questions about the proposed changes, come on up. I believe I'm closing the public hearing, seeing no one willing or able to participate. Any questions from commissioners? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion.
I, I just have one, and I want to... Lynn, this is your area of expertise. And I think with the, based on the nodding that I saw going on during Steve's presentation, and Steve's mentioned that you were involved in the process of crafting this language. This is, this is what you know, or... Did we get it right here?
Yes, I think so. And I really appreciate the, the time that, that you set aside to, Mark was a part of that conversation, to, to really look at shelters in a little, a little bit of a different way than, than I think traditionally we, we look at them in, in a way that I think isn't quite accurate. So I, I appreciate the, the new definition and, and setting it apart from care facilities. So, yeah.
Wonderful. Then I'm, I'd make a motion that we recommend the proposed text amendments as presented by staff to multiple sections of Chapter 39 of the Unified Development Ordinance regarding care facilities, shelters, and public lodging.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We have a unanimous voice vote. Okay. Do we need to schedule any public hearings?
Don't think we have any public hearings, but we are anticipating that Hope will be back with their next round for their study session for the August meeting.
Great. Any commissioners have things to say? We can all wish Brooke a happy vacation, in case she's watching tonight. Anything from staff? Okay, well, I would entertain a motion to say bye. We are adjourned.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.